Testing.
Hey, good evening, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Wednesday. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, the fourteenth day of January in the year 2015. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Six fourteen PM right now, per my phone. This is a nice little reminder for everyone to please silence your phones. We know you're paying a lot of money for clever jingles, but if you would kindly do that, that would be perfect.
Oh, okay.
For all call, councilperson Gajewski.
Yeah.
Ram Chau.
He's not here right now.
He was, okay. Councilperson Bajano. Yun.
Here.
Osborne. Coleman.
Here.
Rivera.
Here.
Waterman.
Yeah.
Council President.
Here.
Ram Chau, out of the room? Okay, would everyone kindly rise to observe a moment of silence?
Laura Campbell, grandmother of Allison Gillard, in the Department of Public Works. Robert Aaron Ture, Public Inspector from HADC.
Cor Jones Junior, my brother from Newark.
Daniel Lee Jansen Senior, former employee of Traffic and Engineering. I believe it was mentioned at the last meeting, James Forrester.
Steven Petrazulla, Special Police Officer, Coastside Park, New Jersey, twenty-two years old.
And to all the victims in Paris, in France, who died at the hands of terrorism.
Very much remain standing for a salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, councilman Ram Chau present at six sixteen PM.
Robert.
Council members, members of the public, permit me, on behalf of the council president and members of the council, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses for the calendar year 2015. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated. On Thursday, January eighth, two thousand and fifteen, my daughter's sixteenth birthday, at four PM to the mayor, council business administrator, and the local papers, posted on the world wide web. I can certify as to our complete and total compliance with the Sunshine Law.
Robert, I'd like to motion to add three C, three D, Resolutions ten four.
Ten Y.
Ten Y, ten Z three.
Ten Y through ten Z three.
Correct. And then defer to ten Z one, PS number twenty-two.
That's what I like, a compound motion. Thank you, Councilman Rivera.
Robert.
Yes, sir.
I want to add this Port Authority Resolution. With ten Z four, I guess.
All right, can you amend your motion to ten, make it ten Z four? Make, will you amend your motion to make it ten Z four?
Motion. I just added it out. That's the original on top, and then those are extra copies.
Okay. All right, on the motion by councilperson Rivera, it is to add items three C and three D, Resolutions ten Y through Z four. Not on the printed agenda, council members, are Resolutions ten Z three and ten Z four. Let me read their titles into the record, so everyone knows what we're talking about tonight. Ten Z three is a resolution opposing legislation transferring management of the Liberty State Park, of Liberty State Park, from the State Department of Environmental Protection to the newly created Meadowlands Regional Commission, urging reversal of this transfer and disapproving any measures that would result in a privatization or redevelopment of Liberty State Park without public scrutiny. The four is a resolution supporting Port Authority Chairman John Degnan's decision to table proposals to cut overnight and weekend service on the Port Authority Trans Hudson path railroad and advocating a citizen-inclusive process to explore measures to expand path train service. So, council members, this motion would be to add C, three C, first reading ordinance is three C, you've received a brand-new version. Three D, Resolutions ten Y through ten Z four. And then after that, to defer to ten Z one, the resolution for the youngsters at public school number twenty-two. I have a motion by councilperson Rivera.
Can I amend still? Robert?
Yes, sir.
Can I amend that motion to untable eleven H? Do that later? Okay. Okay.
Second.
Yeah, the Comcast.
A second.
All right, we have a second to councilperson Rivera's motion. On the motion, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote to add those items to the agenda. With that done, what's our pleasure, council members? We're going to go to Resolution ten Z one. Who's going to do the honor of reading it into the record?
I will. Ten Z one. Can it turn to school resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Ten Z one.
Do it to him. Do I need to do the honors? Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's up to you. You want it? It's up to you.
Okay. Okay.
That's H. H is withdrawn.
Couple lines.
Thank you. H has, resolution, I've just been advised by the business administrator that H is withdrawn.
Withdrawn, huh? H is withdrawn, yes. H is withdrawn.
Ten H.
Ten H. Okay.
Resolution ten H, we did indeed approve that earlier.
Yep.
All right, ten Z one is a resolution commending the Reverend Dr. Ursel F. Webb School, Public School number twenty-two, for holding the junior mayoral elections of Jersey City. Whereas the Junior's Association Biz Town of New Jersey is an approach to financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and work readiness for fifth and sixth grade students, whereby schools partner up with companies, and whereas Reverend Dr. Ursel F. Webb School, Public School number twenty-two, is a public school in Jersey City, New Jersey, and participated in the Biz Town program and selected the city of Jersey City as their company. And whereas amongst, among the jobs offered in the program is the job of mayor. Once the students saw this possibility, they insisted that a mayor be elected for the class. This was the genesis of the Junior Mayoral Elections of Jersey City. And whereas each candidate was selected through a primary within their homerooms. Once selected, each candidate ran with the support and participation of their homeroom peers. Each of three homerooms had a political facilitator from Mayor Steve Phillips's office, who helped the class organize and run campaigns. And whereas the following fifth grade classes and political facilitators were involved. Number one, Ms. Figueroa's class, the political facilitator, was our Corporation Council, Jeremy Farrell. And number two, Ms. Sullivan's class, the political facilitator, was Mohammed Akil. And in three, Ms. Douglas and Ms. Ortiz's class, the political facilitator, was Brian Platt. Whereas after much campaigning and debates, the Public School number twenty-two Junior Mayoral Elections of Jersey City were held on December twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, and the winners are as follows. Mayor Amira Calamito. Deputy Mayor Christopher Gonzalez. Mayor Darrell McCants. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City does hereby commend the winners of the class elections and wishes them much success in the future.
That's mine. Thank you. You're welcome.
We'll take the vote.
Yep.
Yes, I was looking for you.
Call for the vote.
Okay, council members, let's vote, and then we can hear from our aspiring politicians. Councilperson Gajewski.
Congratulations to the three of you. Good job, thank you. I vote aye.
Councilperson Ram Chau.
Congratulations, good job. I vote aye as well.
Councilperson Bajano.
Congratulations, good job, and good luck.
Councilperson Yun.
Congratulations, Kip to go on. Thank you.
And your vote is?
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
I heard you guys ran a really, really good campaign, so congratulations, and I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
I have heard so much talk, I'm sorry I couldn't make it that day, but I've heard so much talk from parents and friends of Wharf that talks about the fabulous day that happened at twenty-two school the day of election. They were so excited about the children wanting to wear shirts and ties and suits and and I'm just really excited. You guys did a great job. Thank you, city representatives, for exposing them to such an exciting event. God bless you, mayor and deputy mayors, and congratulations. I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Rivera.
Congratulations to all three of you. It's actually very commendable. A big thanks to the school administrative staff, principal, vice principal, for doing a great job of this, and I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
It's good to see young people involved in politics. Because what that lets them know, really, what politics is all about, and you guys are our future. We heard about it, it was an exciting campaign, and believe it or not, politics is exciting. So often, we always portray the negative part of politics, but because you guys are young and y'all got that in drilling it and running and y'all excited, hopefully, maybe one of you guys, all ladies, will be a mayor one day. So we're excited, and with that, I vote aye.
Council President.
So, let me begin by first congratulating all of the teachers and all the people who were involved in, and I know each of the teachers for each of the fifth grade classes did an amazing job in bringing their classes together. I had the great benefit of actually being there on one of the days and sat in on Christopher's, Christopher's class. And I congratulate Christopher for a great job, but really congratulate all of you, Darrell, Christopher, Amira. Great job, congratulations, Amira, on your victory and your all winners tonight, as well as on Election Day. And I know what I witnessed was like just great energy in the whole student body. I want to congratulate the principal, Oscar Velez, and Brittany Bunny as well for the work that they did, and Paul Silverman, who introduced all of this, I think, started this whole thing, the chain of events that made this happen. But you all did a great job, and you really showed for us as adults how politics can be done in an exciting, fun way, where it's all about being positive and delivering a great message, and you guys are already pros. So, one thing I just want to say is, don't forget those promises you kept. The school lunches, those soggy pizza Fridays, I heard about that. You need to make sure you take care of that. I will happily and joyously vote yes, and congratulations to all three of you.
I don't think we could have a junior mayor without having a spokesperson. That's part of a mayor's duty, is to give a speech. Would someone, would our mayor like to come up and say a few words to the city council?
Good evening, honorable council members, city officials, guests, and participants in this city council meeting. It is my great privilege as the principal of Webb Elementary School to introduce the
Your name for the
Oh, Oscar Velez, principal of Webb Elementary School, PS twenty-two, I'm sorry. And I won't give a detention for that one. And it is my honor to introduce the following speakers, our mayor and deputy mayors, you heard their names. I would take heed to what they say, because in a few years, you may see them on a ticket, and they have already run a very tight and it was contested race. But they taught us a wonderful lesson about civics. More importantly, they brought out the best in all of us, and with activities like these and the support of the city and its staff, there's no telling how Jersey City could transform in the long term. So thank you very much, and please, I'd like to bring to the podium the mayor of PS twenty-two, Amira Calamito.
Please identify yourself for the record, tell everyone who you are.
I'm Amira Calamito, and I am the mayor of PS twenty-two. Good evening, council members, Mr. City Clerk, and Mr. Corporation Council. I am very happy to finally meet you all. When I was running for mayor, I had many platform issues. For example, sports and cheerleading teams, more field trips, movie and pajama day, Taco Tuesdays, and bringing back real triangle pizzas, not rectangle ones. The one I am most focused on is having better school lunch. Three things I promised were tacos, pizzas, and cheeseburgers. This is important to me, because once they took pizza away, the kids who do not eat the school lunch were forced to eat junk food. They said pizza was taken away for health reasons, but in my mind, I think a pizza is better than a cookie any day. Right now, we are working on putting our promises into action. January, the big month for our administration. We have already meetings scheduled with our principal, Mr. Velez, the food service staff, and even the superintendent, Dr. La, Dr. Marshall Lauf. But I also like the support of the county, the city council members, because you have the power to change things in the city and PS twenty-two, and work with Dr. Lauf, too. Finally, I want to thank Mr. Brian Platt, Mr. Jeremy Fell, and Mr. Mohammed Akil for all they did to make the campaign excited in the whole school. I especially like to thank Mr. Mohammed, since he was my campaign manager, and he helped me win.
She got the right idea.
I want to thank my chief of staff, Randy Monegro, for being a big part to helping me win, and
Randy's last name? Okay, thank you.
And all my classmates in room three twenty-two at PS twenty-two. And of course, Ms. Sullivan, my teacher.
Can I have a question for the mayor? When is the council day at the school, and what are we gonna have for lunch when we come? Did you put that in your, that's not on your list? Oh. Okay.
Hi, Chris.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Clerk, and Mr. Corporation Council. Thank you for taking the time to see us today. My name is Christopher Gonzalez, and I am one of the deputy mayors of PS twenty-two. As the deputy mayor, my focus will be on bringing better field trips to PS twenty-two. The reason why I think we need better field trips is because sometimes kids only get one or two field trips a year. Kids want to have more field trips, so they can learn things and learn new cultures. For example, many kids want to go to an aquarium, so we can learn more about sea life. We are also interested in going to the Bronx Zoo, Washington DC, to meet President Obama, visit dinosaur museums, water parks, Six Flags, and even see the Yankees and Knicks games. All of these places can be fun, and we can learn things, too. Field trips are important to kids, because right now, we are always learning inside school. But we can also learn outside of the school, too. I am asking for all of you to help us with fundraisers, to get the tickets to these places. Why? Because it is kind of hard just for our little school to do it alone. Can we count on your support?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and we would really like to see you at our school and on the field trips with us.
Hey, Paul, I got one question for Paul Silverman. Is there gonna be a pay-to-play law in the fundraiser?
Hi, Darrell.
Good evening, good evening, council members, Mr. City Clerk, and Mr. Corporation Council. It is a pleasure to be here with you this evening. My name is Darrell McCants, and I am also the deputy mayor of PS twenty-two. I would be focusing on making an anti-bullying policy for PS twenty-two. Bullying is a serious matter that needs the attention of everyone. I do not like bullies, and they need to stop. Children can get bullied in different ways, such as verbally, physically, and cyberbullying. I believe people can hurt themselves because of bullies. The world is a place full of evil, and that evil spreads. So many things bring out cruel events in the world, such as war, hate, death, and jealousy. And so many others happen, but let's focus on one thing that happens so often in the world that we overlook, and that is bullying. Children at times do not feel safe coming to school every day. Also, they do not always tell their parents or another adult about the bullying, and that can put them in a lot of danger. Schools should be a safe place where children come to learn and make new friends. I want to place boxes out on each floor where kids can write to Ms. Rodriguez, our child behavior specialist, about being bullied. I also want to create stronger consequences for students that are proven to be a bully, not only in my school, but also in other schools. We can get the help of the Jersey City Police Department to make frequent visits to our schools to warn our students about bullying. These are just a few ideas about preventing bullying. I ask you, council members, to help me make PS twenty-two and other schools a safe place. Thank you for your time and allowing us to come to City Hall to speak to you in all of Jersey City.
City council members, it is evident and obvious why I'm a proud principal of students at the Webb Elementary School, and in closing, I just want to say that beyond the obvious of the importance of a civics lesson and participation in the political process, what I learned, and I continue to learn as the educational leader of the school, was that these students reminded me why we were entrusted with our positions, whether you're sitting across from me or standing right here. That is to build a sustainable, transformational change for generations to come in the city. And when I hear our students speak this way, and feel enhanced because of the time that so many busy people gave, I'm confident that we are on the right path, and we ask you to join us in those continued efforts. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time at the city council meeting.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing me here. All right, council members, council president, I believe you were gonna make a motion to remove eleven H from the tabled agenda?
Motion.
Robert. Can we do some photos?
I was motioning. Did you get it?
All this one go? Yeah. No, 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 we'll wait.
So, is it a group a little bit? Was this a straight election, or was there a runoff? Sorry, let me go by. They were tight. They're posing. Campaign managers? Oh, you want us next to them?
Which way we stay?
Facing up. They should stand in front of us. Mo can stand up.
Everyone on both sides on this side.
Hey, congratulations, man.
Beautiful, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Councilman, Happy New Year to you.
Yes.
Hand one more.
Yes.
We will. Oh, I need to say something.
Record, council members, can we get you back? How to get you back on the record? Principal Velez, Principal Velez. Could you kindly lead your students out quietly? We have to get our meeting.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, sir.
If the students and parents and teachers of PS twenty-two, I believe there's homework to be done tonight, and we will be collecting it, so if you could please exit, thank you.
Council members.
We'll have to motion again, Robert?
Wait.
Yes.
I do?
We are good to go. Would everyone kindly leave quietly?
Mitch.
Raphael Stabler.
We have a motion. I believe, council president, you wanted to remove item eleven H from the tabled agenda to consider it for final adoption? Sir, that's the cable television franchise ordinance?
What was your question, Robert?
Wanted to remove eleven H.
Right, correct.
That, the motion is by Council President Lavaro.
I thought we had to approve that today.
And the motion is to remove item eleven H from the tabled agenda
That's what we're doing.
For consideration. We have a small group here, but loud noises. Please leave quietly. Please leave quietly. Allow me to read the title into the record. City Ordinance 14-155 is an ordinance granting renewal of municipal consent to Comcast of Jersey City LLC, its successors endorse signs to construct, connect, operate, and maintain a cable television system in the city of Jersey City, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey. We have a motion by Council President, seconded by?
Me. I motioned it, but it's okay.
Councilperson Coleman motion.
Let's get out the whiteout. Councilperson Coleman made the motion. Who made the second? By Councilperson Waterman. Would someone, please, the conversation in the back, please?
Just close the door. Thank you.
On the, to remove item 11H from the tabled agenda, Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarro?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to remove it from the tabled agenda. Just give me one moment. As I indicated, City Ordinance, item 11H is on our table, now is off our tabled agenda. It is City Ordinance 14-155, an ordinance granting renewal of the municipal consent to Comcast of Jersey City LLC, its successors endorse signs to construct, connect, operate, and maintain a cable television system in the city of Jersey City, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey. This ordinance was introduced on November 25th. Prior to that, all of the statutory prerequisites were met. A public hearing was conducted on December 17th, 2014. It was conducted and closed. It was tabled after the close of the public hearing. We've now removed it from the tabled agenda for final adoption, for possible final adoption. What is your pleasure, council members? Shall we move for the final adoption of City Ordinance 14-155?
I move for the final adoption.
Well, it's, we're gonna, I'm gonna call the vote. Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Aye.
Council President? We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance 14-155. It'll become four Q on this agenda, no pun intended. First reading ordinances, council members. I'll read their titles into the record. 3A is City Ordinance 15-001, an ordinance approving a 35-year tax exemption for a low-income affordable housing project located at 561 Montgomery Street to be constructed by Montgomery Gardens Family Phase 1 Urban Renewal Associates LP, a qualified housing sponsor under the New Jersey Mortgage Housing Finance Agency Law, New Jersey statutes annotated 55:14K-1 et cec. 3B is an ordinance honoring former Ward D Councilman William "Bill" Gawhan by naming the 100 steps connecting the Jersey City Heights with Franklin Street, designating it Bill Gawhan Way. 3C is City Ordinance 15-003. You have a new version before you this evening, council members. It's an ordinance amending the Jersey City Municipal Code, Chapter 296 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 7 Excavations, to amend the standards for street excavations in Chapter 160 Fees and Charges, Section JJ, to increase the fees to excavate streets. D is City Ordinance 15-004, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3 Parking, Standing, and Stopping of the Jersey City Code, amending Section 332-24, No Parking Certain Hours, Designating 25 Feet in Front of 102 Van Ripen Street as No Parking Monday through Friday, except holidays, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, 11:00 AM to Noon, and 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Were items 3A through 3D, Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye for introduction.
Ramchall?
Aye for introduction.
Bajano?
No to A.
Councilperson Yoon?
Before I do that, let me ask you 3A, Council, BA, and Jeremy, that 3A, they're land, actually they're land owned by Housing Authority, correct? Okay, now they're developed, gonna be leased there. Can't you tell me that they are, what kind of amount lease fee involved? How many years Housing Authority will be give to term of lease?
We can have them in for second reading.
Okay, so they're gonna come in second reading, right?
They're at the caucus, they'll gladly come back.
Okay. For introduction, I say aye. For A to D.
A through D. Councilperson Osborne?
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Coleman?
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera?
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman?
Aye for introduction.
Council President?
Aye.
A has been introduced, 8-1. B through D, 9-0. No vote on A, Councilman Bajano. Tighten your seatbelts, council members. We have a lot of second reading ordinances. 4A, City Ordinance 14-166, is an ordinance reappropriating $214,285 proceeds of obligations not needed for their original purposes in order to provide for various capital improvements in and by the city of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, State of New Jersey. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Ramchall. I believe the second was by Councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarro?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing for final adoption of Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item 4A, City Ordinance 14-166. Onto item 4B. 4B is City Ordinance 14-167. It's an ordinance authorizing the city of Jersey City to accept title and ownership of all real property and all personal property owned by the Jersey City Parking Authority and assume all leases executed by the Jersey City Parking Authority. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yes, Jason Berg for the record. How many properties are being acquired from the Jersey City Parking Authority to Jersey City?
13 parking lots, a building, miscellaneous vehicles, all of their operate, all of their operating equipment, everything.
And that will be going under the Jersey City Police Department?
It comes to the city, being that we have subsumed the authority. We have abolished the authority.
Right. How much is being added to the Jersey City budget or, for one question, and what are our savings?
There have been, the business administrator could speak to the savings, around $600,000, I believe I heard at one point.
We're in the middle of the budget process right now, so I can't say how much is being added.
Estimate?
We're reducing the budget next month, so I'm not gonna bet you it, yes, but it can be different.
Okay.
I'm actually meeting the public safety tomorrow, so I don't know that budget.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
This is a public hearing on the subject ordinance. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
I'm gonna give the motion to Councilperson Waterman, seconded by the Council President. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall? Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarro?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance 14-167. Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
You know, actually, I'm not happy with that deal we made it. Actually, I know that the mayor is really diligent to work with Comcast, but the company do more than...
16,000?
Oh, parking, oh yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, aye, that I, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay. Yes, I do that.
We voted on Comcast.
Aye, yeah, yeah.
Councilperson Osborne?
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarro?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item 4B, City Ordinance 14-167. Item 4C, City Ordinance 14-168. It's an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332 Traffic, Vehicles and Traffic, excuse me, Article 3 Parking, Standing, and Stopping of the Jersey City Code, amending Section 332-24, No Parking Certain Hours, Designating 25 Feet in Front of 51 Sherman Place as No Parking Monday through Friday, except holidays, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This is a public hearing on the subject ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Give it to the president.
President? Second by Councilperson Coleman. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski? Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing for final adoption of City Ordinance 14-168, Item 4C, Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarro?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of Item 4C, City Ordinance 14-168. Onto Item 4D, City Ordinance 14-169. It's an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3 Parking, Standing, and Stopping, and Article 9 Parking for the Disabled of the Jersey City Code, Designating a reserved parking space at 194 Neptune Avenue, 28 Sherman Place, 140 Wegman Parkway, and amending the reserved parking space at 58 Gray Street, 233 Wegman Parkway, 194 Neptune Avenue, and repeal the reserved parking space at 138 Wegman Parkway. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
I'm gonna give Councilperson Waterman the motion and I'm gonna give the Council President?
Councilperson Coleman.
Council President, the second, right?
Okay.
Or Councilperson Coleman?
Coleman.
We'll get the second. Fine. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarro?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close the public hearing for the final adoption of Item 4D, City Ordinance 14-169. Councilperson Kudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council President Lavarro?
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance 14-169, Item 4D.
Robert?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to table 4E.
Question. I understand that's the intent. Do we want to preserve the process by asking if there's a public hearing and closing it, closing the public hearing because if we don't do that, then we have, we can hit it with a defibrillator at the next meeting if any problem gets resolved. Otherwise, we have to go to square one.
Okay.
So let me announce that 4E is City Ordinance 14-170, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3 Parking, Standing, and Stopping, amending Section 332-27, Angle Parking of the Jersey City Code, Designating 30-degree Angle Parking on the north side of First Street, Marin Boulevard to Provost Street, Back-In Parking Only. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Is there anyone wishing to be heard? Mr. Harrington?
Yes, thank you, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, for the record. I just wanted, because the public comment will be closed after, after your vote, whether or not to table it, I did actually request that this be tabled as well because this concerns a portion of First Street that my client was approved for a franchise ordinance some months ago to put in the electric charging stations. And since that time, he has actually installed charging stations on this portion of the block and he has the angled parking in, in a way in which it is head-in parking. That's how the franchise ordinance was approved. Now, my understanding is there is an issue with the Jersey City Traffic Department, whether or not there is appropriate width of the right-of-way or the cartway for that to occur. I believe that that was resolved initially before the council was presented with that franchise ordinance and there is appropriate cartway and that the head-in parking can happen. I have been in contact with the Jersey City Traffic Engineers, Mr. De Souza. We're actually going out to the site tomorrow to physically inspect all the measurements to make sure that they're, they're appropriate and this can happen. So for the council's benefit, that's, that's one of, that's the reason that I had requested that this be carried so that we can review all the measurements before an action is taken. Thank you.
How many charging stations they gonna put in?
How many?
Yeah, charging stations, electric charging stations.
I think there's, I think there's built right now to maybe four or five on this portion of the street and then closer to the Marin, which has not been constructed yet, there may be an additional three to four. I don't remember off the top of my head, but that's a ballpark.
There are two, there are two charging stations, so it's actually, I think, 10 cars.
Okay.
See, that's what I'm saying. When I see that you guys are looking for 21, 21, actually 30-degree angle parking, so each charging station able to serve the two car, that means you guys are gonna put in at least 10 electric charging stations, correct? I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
I think the agreement is there's, in front of our house and finished building, there are five stations. They do this on the first street.
Correct.
See, I have an issue for that, actually. The franchise argument itself, you know, then I mentioned to the... The franchise argument itself, you know, then I mentioned to their franchise fees, so I'm not happy with that.
We're not speaking.
But we're going to table it, right? So, I'm okay.
This is about the parking, not the franchise.
And, and just...
Yes, I understand.
For the record, your comments were taken from the caucus meeting, and we looked into them, and we are going to be making changes to the franchise agreement, based, based on some of the comments you had in caucus.
Okay, so they're going to change your franchise agreement, good.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Council members? We've, uh... Jason Berg?
Jason Berg, for the record. The question is, will, uh, there, when he's thirty, how many spaces are going to be made? I heard, uh...
Twenty-one parking space, able to, they installed around a ten electric charging stations.
And with those charging stations, there'd be a fee for charging for the individuals? Or, how does that work?
Yes, there's nothing different than gas station on the corner. They charge for that service. Instead of selling the gas or diesel, they sell the electric.
And with this ordinance being passed when it does, will the, the, I presume the DPW will be making lines for the people to park? So, everything, everyone gets a good spot?
It's fair to assume.
Is that, is that a truism? Will they be doing that?
The lines are going to be done by the developer, I understand.
Our developer?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, thank you very much for speaking.
Public hearing, anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
I'm giving it to the Council President, seconded by Councilperson Coleman. I'm going to start, like, facing you guys. Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano? Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote. For the close of the public hearing.
You're going to make the motion, Countess.
Thank you. I know we're...
To table.
Motion to table, right?
Motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Osborne, seconded by Councilperson Coleman. And this is to table. Item four E, city ordinance fourteen-one-seventy, after the close of the public hearing. Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman? Council President?
Aye.
It's tabled nine-zero. Onto item four F. Item four F is city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-one. An ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, Article Three, procedures as it pertains to site plan review thresholds. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Uh, yes, Yvonne Ballser, could you explain what you mean by thresholds for site plans?
I saw Jeff here, is he still here?
Jeff?
Jeff? Jeff? Here, let, let, let me try. Jeff is, Jeff didn't necessarily do this ordinance. This ordinance...
We know what threshold falls. Yeah. He's not, oh, here he is.
Any project with deviations that does not meet the threshold for a major site plan shall be considered a minor site plan. That's the language that's being changed in the code. This ordinance amends the Development Procedures Section of the Land Development Ordinance to revise and update thresholds for site plan review. This will add a provision for a variance, also known as a deviation, located in redevelopment plan areas citywide. And I read you the italicized, and the only language change in the section three-forty-five dash sixteen, C-one, and C, and C-one A.
So, if you're in a redevelopment zone, and a developer wants to change something that's going to probably impact your neighbor, they don't have to go to a re, uh, to, um, a variance, get a variance? It seems like it's being one-stop shop. I don't think that's right.
So, can I just, can I clarify something?
Sure.
Um, because my understanding is there are things today that people do, and there's nobody that they have to go to for approval. This, this says, even if you don't have to go for site plan approval, if you do anything that requires a variance, we're going to call that something else so that you have to come to the planning board. Because right now, there's, today, there are people who don't have to go to planning board. This is going to make sure more people have to go to the planning board for, to get approval.
Or, uh, var, but you mentioned the word variance?
Yeah.
And that would be eliminated?
No, no, so there's certain times when variances are not covered, and they don't have to go to the planning board. This now says, even if you do a variance, you still have to go to the planning board.
So, it'd be nice that neighbors would be notified, because I've known of incidents where things happened, and neighbors were not notified, they got scuttlebutt. An example would be Bright Varick. People were not notified, and at that point, I lived in the neighborhood, I should have been notified, and I wasn't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilperson Coleman. By Councilperson Osborne. Let me just get Mrs. Ballser's name down here, I didn't record that. Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchal?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir. Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera? Waterman?
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
We have an eight-zero vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption of city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-one, item four F, Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Still away.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
With Councilman Rivera out of the room, we have eight-zero for the final adoption of item four F, city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-one. Councilman Rivera, can we get you on four F? That's the Land Development Ordinance Amendment. Thank you. Final adopted vote for city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-one is nine-zero. That was item four F. Four G is city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-two, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, supplementary zoning as it pertains to height exceptions for rooftop appurtenances. This is a public hearing on the ordinance, Mrs. Ballser.
Yes, could you explain?
This is, Mrs. Ballser, many of the new buildings or modernized buildings in Jersey City are using the roof as a recreation area. So, and to make these areas accessible to people with disabilities, they have to sometimes raise the elevator shaft up on, up above the roof, and that's what this permits. People to may, have exceptions to the height for the purposes of making rooftop surfaces accessible to people with disabilities.
What about buildings that were, that are, uh, say, grandfathered in? Are they, are they under this or not? If my building decides to do this, will we have to put an elevator there? I mean, because we've been, what about buildings that's been around for, um...
Nothing affects, nothing affects those.
So, only new construction?
It's saying if you want to put an elevator, and for ADA, for ADA reasons, you need to go a little bit higher, that it's okay, as long as you have a setback, so it's not visible from the road.
What about the people that have buildings that there, uh, there's maybe a couple of steps up there? Are they required to do that, if they decided to put in recreation for an older building?
No, no.
This doesn't require them to do anything.
Want to put it in.
Doesn't require anything.
Okay, that's one oh.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballser. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion by Ramchal, seconded by Coleman.
A motion by Councilman Ramchal, seconded by?
Coleman.
Coleman. Who closed the public hearing? Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano? Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera? Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the close of the public hearing for the final adoption of city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-two, item four G, Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the final adoption of city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-two, item four G. Onto item four H. Four H is city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-three, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Tidewater Basin Redevelopment Plan to modify mixed-use district uses and clarify language. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Any members of the public wishing to be heard? Mr. Berg, what this ordinance does is remove language that was in the prior redevelopment plan that included the word nightclub. So, the word nightclub has been removed.
And the reason for the removing of the nightclub was to?
Community input.
Community?
Designed in the neighborhood.
Not designed in the neighborhood, okay. And, uh, for the record, for the people who may not know, what is, uh, mixed use for the, for the people out on?
It's commercial, it's rental, it's, it's a neighborhood.
Right neighborhood, all right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by the Council President. To close the public hearing, Councilman Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote. Close the public hearing for the final adoption of item four H, city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-three. Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera? Waterman?
Aye.
Lavarah?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the final adoption of item four H, city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-three. Item four I, city ordinance fourteen-one-hundred-seventy-four. It's an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Ocean Bayview Redevelopment Plan to bring language up to date. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by the Council President. Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudzuski?
Aye.
Ramchal?
Aye.
Bajano? Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close the public hearing for the final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-four, item four J. Fourteen one hundred seventy-five, it's an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of block two fourteen, lots three and four, and block two thirteen, lots one and three, from five hundred Manila Avenue LLC. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yvonne Ballser, is this the BJ area, South Bright?
This is across, this is adjacent to five hundred Manila Avenue, Unico, between Unico and Marin Boulevard.
Yeah, why are we acquiring the property?
Because this was part of an arrangement many, many years ago where this property would come back to the city after...
After like a number of years?
Yes.
This is extra property from, from the Paco property there? From the development of, I see a lot...
It's around the area of the fire headquarters.
Of the fire headquarters.
The baseball field, the Roberto Clemente Field. This was part of the plan when Unico Towers was originally built, that this would come back to the city.
So, this is going to be, going to be developed or not? You know, we need some open space in that particular area, and that's, that is a concern, and I was living downtown. Lot more people are coming in, you need more open space, I'll tell you, than was Parkers being only utilized when I was there. I'm hoping that when this is developed, you will consider putting in open space. It's just not enough in Jersey City for the number of families that are moving in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballser. This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to be heard? Mr. Jason Berg?
Yes. The size of the lots, how much the space will be reallocated back to the city?
We're, we're talking the Little League Field, we're talking considerable properties, acres of property, couple acres of property.
How many acres, and it's two hundred and seventy-eight square feet?
As significant piece of property.
This for the record, that significant is, how many acres? This, this, this for the record, Robert, I just wanted to see what, you know... I only used two minutes.
Here, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll get him the answer, I was listening to the question.
Since we got any back...
It's actually, it's two, two city blocks are affected, two blocks, two fifteen and two fourteen, and are a total of, excuse me, three city lots, two fifteen, two fourteen and two thirteen, and five lots. So, we're talking a significant amount of property here. The, this was, the city agreed to rent a portion of the property in nineteen seventy-four with an option to buy for a sum of ninety thousand dollars. So, we, it served as collateral when the Unico building was being built, and now it's coming back home.
Oh, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, thank you, Councilperson Waterman. Did I hear a second?
Second.
From Osborne.
By Councilperson Osborne, I heard Councilperson Osborne. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
This is the second reading for this, to close the hearing here.
This is to close the public hearing.
Oh, aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close the public hearing to consider the final adoption of City Ordinance of item four J, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-five. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
No, because this, all of this land attaches to the firehouse, and all these stories going around saying they want to sell off the firehouse, and they want to put up buildings there, and it attaches to the ball field, I say no. I'm trying to speak up, so I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, it's not working, Yvonne?
No.
I said no, because it attaches to the parking lot, which is there, which the police use, the fire department uses, and it's, there's the baseball field, and it'll be like a Summit Avenue deal where they'll sell it all off, and we're gonna lose loads of more parking eventually.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
All right. Yeah, and you know what's gonna happen, they're gonna say yes, just like Summit Avenue.
Okay.
I say no.
All right, we're gonna go call a roll, Councilman Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote no, I'm just a little concerned about that baseball field, that it's gonna come back, definitely.
It's on, it's on Green Acres inventory.
Yes, inventory.
It's in our Green Acres, we would have to, we'd have to replace it with twice as much.
Okay.
Okay, Councilman Rivera, your vote, sir?
Good.
Your vote, sir? You're voting aye?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote, you know, considering that, you know, it, it, it is, it's definitely Green Acres, but I don't want to lose that park.
Right, but if, we won't, but understand, anytime we take anything off the Green Acres inventory, we have to replace it twofold.
Right.
Council, right, Council, Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have an eight-one vote for the final adoption, Councilman Bajano, voting no on item four J, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-five. Five more, six more. Four K. City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-six is an ordinance authorizing the imposition of a deed notice on the property owned by the City of Jersey City known as Mary Benson Park, also known as block one zero nine zero one, lots one twenty-nine and one thirty. This is a public hearing on the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yes, Jason Berg, for the record, this for clarification, what is meant by imposition on the ordinance?
There was determined to be some contamination on, on the property, and we have to put a deed notice on the property so that it is recorded, and any thing in the future, it's been, it's noted to anyone who does any research on the property.
So, what, so it's been contaminated with what? Chromium?
Chromium, but it's been cleaned up, it's, there's, there was a work plan, it says it's been cleaned up, there's a new park, and it's now open again to kids. They just have to do this so that if anybody ever does, if we ever did sell it, that it would appear on the record, housekeeping item.
And where is Mary Benson Park in Jersey City?
Five, School Five.
Excuse me?
By School Five.
School Number Five.
By School Five, and for people don't know where School Five...
Greenville.
Excuse me?
You have to get out of Greenville, Mary Benson Park.
So, numbers four, for people at, who don't know where the Number Five school is, where that, where is that in Jersey?
Mersey Lee Street, right by the firehouse at Newark and Mersey Lee Street.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion.
We have a motion by the Council President, I'm giving the second to Councilperson Osborne to close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close, for the final adoption, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Aye.
I heard you all speak before I called your name, Councilman Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-six, item four K on our agenda. Four L, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-seven, an ordinance rescinding ordinance fourteen one hundred and fifty-one and terminating, terminating a five-year tax agreement between the City of Jersey City and one twenty-nine Brunswick Avenue LLC for the property designated as block one one zero zero nine, block ten on the city's tax map, and more commonly known by the street address of one twenty-nine Brunswick Street, because, Mrs. Ballser, the city tax collector determined that the property had been substantially completed before they had made their proper application for the tax abatement.
So, therefore, they're, they're having it rescinded?
Why it's being rescinded.
Yes, well, you know, it'd be nice if we can do the same thing for P, thank you very much.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, who is the second?
Council President.
Council President, thank you, Councilman Ram Chao, to close the public hearing, Councilman Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-seven, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four L, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-seven. Onto item four M. Four M is City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-eight. It's an ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to extend its sublease with Moishas Self-Storage LLC for storage space at Ten Senate Place, Jersey City for five additional months, retroactive to November first, two thousand and fourteen. The public hearing on the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Jason Berg, for the record, how much space is being rented at that facility right now, besides this?
Fourteen thousand square feet.
And this is for the Office of Emergency Management, for...
Their equipment and other items, and they...
Correct, and we're looking for a less expensive place.
Hopefully, it's in Jersey City, if you can find it.
It'll be less expensive than this.
About Robert, can I ask one thing? This lease terminated March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and the OEM planned to move to Jersey City Municipal Utility Building, right? How, yeah, how's the construction work going on? They finished the job, how far, what kind of progress they have? Because, you know, they raised the check of the rent almost two hundred percent.
Yep.
And now, if we not extend the lease after March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, we don't know what kind of rent we're gonna be charged for, so I'd like to make sure our work scheduling will be done and the build warehouse for OEM before March thirty-first.
Facing down at the Municipal Service Complex, OEM equipment, yeah, we're reconsidering the idea, the needs of OEM is gonna include too much structure, so we are revisiting a different idea that probably, should probably, will not be ready by the end of March, so we'll probably step this month to month, so, yeah, I'm thinking this coming up, but I foresee OEM moving their equipment twice to, to...
But now, when I actually asked last meeting, that you guys are ready for March thirty-first, they say, yes, we will be done, but when I visited the, uh, uh, Jersey Utility Complex building, seems like they are not ready, you know, that's why my concern, if the lease terminated March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, now you say, we're gonna extend month to month, today in the country, do they say, how much rent will be month to month, or are they just gonna be charged the same amount of the rent?
Same number of months.
All right, so, but, do you have any guessing date, predict when they're gonna be able to, yeah?
I should add that probably firm though by this council meeting, we have to start negotiating the, uh, vendors, or, or the new space I'm looking at, where should we begin to walk again, prior to the Marion Gardens site, up front of that, we're looking at the Marion Gardens Warehouse, one one nine, that is currently vacant, that they made available to us a year or so ago, and we're revisiting that idea, as opposed to making the old, the, the, the complex.
Bob, are they gonna move back out of that first floor and give it back to the Jersey City Police Training Bureau? I mean...
Councilman, I want to understand, when the police moved that, the storage site was supposed to be a temporary site, it wasn't, there was no long-term commitment, and the plan right now is, the practice retention centers at the old DPDW complex at four forty, which was never factored in when they built the facility, needs facing for all records for the city, so we are moving that into the first floor, so it'll be restored second, so I don't foresee police getting that as their building, and we agreed, so understand the second floor, and one of the reasons why we're not gonna, another reason why we're not gonna move OEMs in the storage, that OEM wanted to eliminate a portion of the second floor, they wanted to build high, so it would decrease the police face, so they...
No, Bob, and that's why I went, I believe you, I went to the police director, and what's going on there is a shame, and they should be out of there, that should be a police facility for training our recruits and training the police in Jersey City, and the...
This is, Council, this is a worthwhile discussion, but...
Okay, it's a worthwhile discussion, it has to be brought up and let the people know.
Yeah, but this is an ordinance that we need to work through right now, so...
I don't, I don't think, you know, in terms of a police cap, I think putting them in an old storage center is not, it's not appropriate, I think a nicer facility than an old storage center better.
But, okay.
All right.
Actually, Robert...
Close the public hearing.
Let me ask you, one thing is I missed that...
A motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, let's, let's finish it, the public hearing.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Rivera, to close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
You've closed the public hearing, nine zero, we're gonna take a vote, but, Councilmembers, you can make your comments during your votes, Councilperson Gajewski.
Robert, I think there's additional questions.
Yes.
Okay, Robert, actually, I missed that explanation, what is the major reason we're not able to move in that, the DPDW building?
It's not about the building, the Municipal Service Complex, the living storage building that's next to the Municipal Service Complex.
Yes.
Now, OEM, when they initially approached us about moving theirs, putting it into that building, they told us to need it, it was ten thousand square feet, we had ten thousand square feet, when they met with our architects, instead of being on one level, because the police have the second floor, they came in one, with all these renovations made, which would have eliminated a portion of the second floor, they wanted to build high, so they could bring their four person and stack everything high, as opposed to putting everything on one level, I don't think that's a proper usage of that building, I think, you know, if we're gonna use the storage, you know, let's be distributed, files and, and, and old records, if OEM needs a higher space, we should look at the Marion Gardens, the kind of work that we've spent to make that retrofit of OEM, is not worth, it's cost a lot, you know, Councilman has mentioned, police is doing training on the second floor, you know, they would lose, you know, twenty-five percent of their training space, I just don't think it's financially responsible.
You know, Robert, I just want to build accountability to the Urban Service side. Actually, less than months ago, less than months ago, when they showed the City Council caucus meeting, when I asked a question, they're very clearly, yes, we are ready to move in before end of the March, now, one month later, they say, well, the place is not big enough, you know what I'm saying, come on, now, city gonna looking for new place.
You know, when that was first, it was well, they just never told us they wanted it off, as opposed to one hundred.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, before they say, we're gonna move to DPDW, they're not even, they decide to look in their place, so in other words, they misread the City Council, this council, get the wrong information, you know, that's not fair to us, that's what I tried to make sure, you know, and also meantime, six months of rent, we gotta pay two hundred percent increase they did that, so I feel like we get, mm, you know what I'm saying, it's not for the taxpayer, not only this, the City Council, so when they make some presentation, I want to make sure some, something provide information, reliable information, you know what I'm saying, just, just saying, you know, it's not fair, okay? That's what I'm saying there.
Taking counsel, actually, I'm gonna be very quick, one question, one statement, so you said they're gonna maintain the rent after this, at the same level, do you have a firm commitment on that?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I, I think you need to keep the council abreast, because when this does expire, when we are not in a good bargaining position with them after this, to continue to extend the lease month to month, and we're gonna get robbed, so, you need to make sure that stay on top of this.
President actually say, right, we don't know how much they're gonna charge now.
I'm gonna take it from the top, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chao.
Uh, before I vote, Bob, like you said, you guys looking in the Marion Garden on one and nine, there's ample space there, so let's visit that, yeah, so please, let's look, look into that, and I, I agree with the Council President, I'm gonna support this now, I vote aye, but we need to pay close attention to this.
Councilperson Bajano.
You know, once again, we build a facility that's out of date already, it doesn't fit the needs of the city, wait a minute, Bob, and it's wrong, I'm gonna vote aye, because we have no choice, but it's a shame, that building should have been able to accommodate a lot more of the city, and once again, the city screwed up, I don't blame it, mostly on this administration, I go back to the prior business administration.
Councilperson Yun.
At this point, we got no choice, we have to say aye, you know, but, please, number one, don't misread it, you know, this council, and, you know, not even just less than months, when they, you know, give you wrong presentation, this council at least, it's told to ourselves, so please, period of time motion, and make sure the council can say that, you know, when they, month to month, after March first, March thirty-first, we gotta make sure that rent, you know, other than that, this is really...
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four M, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-eight. Onto item fourteen one hundred seventy-nine, uh, four N, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-nine, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a developer's agreement and deed of easement with Journal Square One Urban Renewal LLC and Journal Squared Condominium Association Incorporated affecting a portion of Magnolia Avenue. This is a public hearing. On the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by the council president to close the public hearing. Councilman Gajewski. Ramchall. Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final, for the close of the public hearing for final adoption. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Before say, you know, cast my vote, can you explain that the developer is obligated to make a certain improvement in that area as exchange of easement? Would you explain to me that, what that means, certain improvement they're gonna provide?
Talking about the huge development, sir, this is access...
Yes, I understand, but, yeah, access, but they're gonna do some kind of certain improvement in that access. What kind of improvement they're gonna do?
This is a walkway and...
So walkway, we can build a lot of different way, you know what I'm saying? So now...
Sorry?
Yeah, tell me. What is it?
Jeff, could you speak?
We get the eas, we're gonna give the easement, you know, for that access. But now...
Yeah, Jeff, go to the podium, please. Podium, please. Yeah, podium.
You know, reason is that, okay, if we see that, where is the condition of the site plan to approve the project? Developer is obligated to make certain improvement to the portion of their avenue. So now, when you say certain improvement, what kind of improvement they're gonna provide? They're obligated to provide the city of Jersey City, what they call it.
So this is the plaza for Magnolia Avenue. They're going to create a second front entrance to the Journal Square Transportation Center, where the helix is.
Mm-hmm.
So they will actually be, the developer will be doing improvements onto the Port Authority's property, as well as on city property in the Magnolia Avenue right-of-way there. All the curbs, streets, and sidewalks will be removed, and they're gonna build a plaza with nice surface treatments, planters, benches, lighting, landscaping, as well as a lot of bike parking for the transportation center. So it'll be a really nice plaza that as they build out their three phases for the Journal Square project, and then they'll have their retail also fronting on that. So it'll be a really nice public plaza and create a, a new front entrance, really, to the station area, rather than the kind of back door that's there now.
Okay, so it's gonna be...
And they're required to build it and maintain it, and this is the developer agreement with the city to do that maintenance.
Thank you. Your vote, Councilman Yun.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
Your vote, Councilman Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred seventy-nine, item four N. Four O. Somewhat related is City Ordinance fourteen one hundred eighty, is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an emergency access easement agreement with Journal Square Associates LLC and the Port Authority Trans Hudson Corporation, PATH, permitting emergency vehicles of the city of Jersey City to travel across the property owned by Journal Square Associates and PATH. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Coleman, seconded by Councilperson Osborne. Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing. For final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred eighty, item four O, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred eighty, item four O. Our last second reading ordinance, four P. Is an ordinance approving a twenty-year tax exemption for a market rate rental project to be constructed by two thirty-four Sedam Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, New Jersey statute annotated forty A colon twenty dash one at second, located at two eighteen, two forty Sedam Avenue, Jersey City. When I look up, Mrs. Bolser will be at the podium. Hello, Mrs. Bolser.
Yes, you're on the lottery. Exactly where is this?
On two eighteen, two forty.
Well, I'm not familiar with that, that particular street, so we're exactly...
It's at the foot of Communipaw Avenue, Yvonne.
The foot of the Communipaw Avenue, okay.
This is where we most need a project like this, yes.
Well, you know, I'll be very honest, we also need open space in Jersey City. The whole area of the city is being, you're stuck in traffic all over the city. But I wanna say one thing, Jersey City have relatives live in Manhattan. That's all you see is advertisement, come Jersey City. I believe that we're selling the city at a discount, we really are. People come here because there's certain advantages to getting to Manhattan. And we're constantly selling the city. And the problem I have with this is that it's not a ratable. All abatements are not ratables. So therefore, when the county strikes the budget, it totally ignores the value of that building. And the people who live there, and the people who don't live there, we are affected, because we are worth less than nineteen eighty-eight when we got happened, when we were between almost seven billion dollars, we're still under six billion dollars. All these abatements do not add to the rating base. Number two, it was in the paper this week, that we will receive a twenty-five percent increase in the population of schools. Well, this is not paying anything to school costs at all. Where will we have that money gonna come from? Now, I've never had children in public school, but I always paid my school taxes. So just saying, they will not have any children in public school, or neither did I have any children in public school. And we're looking at twenty-five percent increase within the next five years of population. And we're not making any plans to pay for this. I still think that...
Mrs. Bolser.
I am just giving you as why we should...
Respectfully, it's just a general conversation you're having about abatement.
Well, it, it is...
How about I provide you with a copy of the ordinance? And you can, you can read at your leisure, it's very deserving...
There, there are many people in that particular area, because I've actually been to the serve sales and other sales, people, most neighborhoods who are losing their homes through high taxes, this does nothing for them.
Okay, thank you.
And we need more open space, no matter where you are in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Let's stay on the ordinance.
Yes, Jaserberg, for the record, can the, why are they receiving a twenty-year abatement when some people get five and some people get thirty? Is there, this, is this...
It depends on the length of time of a mortgage. Most tax abatements are co-terminous.
No, this is not, this is a market rate project.
This is a mar, market rate.
Yeah.
Which means for the public that don't understand that term... Excuse me?
You wanna speak to that, Jeremy?
Jeremy.
It's based on where it is and is driven by the policy, and it's being very public, and it's still a long way to where that doesn't make the city, and it's a long... And then those sort of, and certain, certain lengths of payment, with options to get longer payments or leave certain additional conditions.
Right. And for the record, what ward is this in?
Ward F.
Ward F, okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone else?
Uh, just one thing, I...
I got two speakers.
The city can develop a scale, so it makes it easy for abatements and not be the Wizard of Oz and making things there.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Very quickly, Donald Pepe, Sprentse Hollenbeck, I know at the end of a long agenda, I just wanna say that...
Don Pepe, P-E-P-E, right?
Correct. We're, we're very proud of this project, because it is located in an area that's been traditionally underserved, underserved by new development. That should be the focus of tax abatements, should be to promote development in areas that would not otherwise be developed, be developed. We believe this project fits that purpose. It's a gorgeous building, it's gonna replace a blighted, boarded-up vacant building, it's gonna create a, an impetus for new development surrounding it. It's a good thing, we encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by whom? Council president?
Yes.
Thank you, council president. Seconded, I'm gonna give the second to the council president to close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of our final second reading ordinance, Councilperson Gajewski.
This is a good project, and I'm really happy to see things moving to the south part of the city. I vote aye.
Councilperson Ramchall.
I agree, we do need, uh, uh, development, in my ward, Diane, Frank, I do, I do agree with Councilperson Gajewski, because we do need project in my ward, Diane, ward C as well as ward D, so I vote aye on this project.
Councilperson Bajano.
I agree with a lot of what Yvonne is saying.
You gotta speak into that mic and...
All right. I agree with a lot of what Yvonne's saying, and I understand, but after seeing the presentation of this boarded-up building and everything, I think this project for the area right now to start this area off is a good idea. Uh, but I think the city has to start looking at stopping these twenty-year abatements, twenty-five-year abatements, and cutting back for the sake of the people that own homes in the city.
You're voting aye.
I vote aye.
Councilperson Yun.
Well, first things, I like a place to develop, to brave enough to stand that, you know, have an idea to build, a building, you know, that area, I give them really, encourage the developer, really, I appreciate it. But their concern is that twenty years of tax abatement, I think the developer deserved to have a tax abatement in that location, but twenty years seems like too long. Reason is that if we compare with annual surcharge between conventional tax, over the twenty years, they save almost two-point-five million dollars. In the meantime, because of unit and what they pay annual surcharge, city has actually subsidized almost fifty-two thousand dollars a year, and over the twenty years, we gotta spend one million dollars actually subsidize a miniature service in that area. So I'm not happy it's twenty years, so I'm gonna post a no, but you guys has a good movement to that area, I appreciate it for that. But I'm not disagree with the twenty-year tax one, so I vote no.
You're voting no?
Yes.
Good, good idea, but no, okay. Councilperson...
I just wanna, just...
I'm sorry? We didn't get that, Jeremy.
No, 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 no.
Jeremy, we didn't hear you.
Jeremy, what'd you say?
I just wanna say that we have a...
You're too close to the mic.
I just wanna say that we have a...
Okay.
Okay.
It's not totally accurate.
Right.
The physical analysis is not...
Continuing with the vote, Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
I have to say, I really appreciate seeing this kind of development coming to Ward F. It's gonna like bridge the gap between E and F downtown Jersey City. It's gonna take a lot of abandoned ugly property, remove it and put a project that's gonna make the homeowners that are living next to that abandoned buildings and whatnot feel a lot more secure and safe, and it's gonna create a neighborhood, and I'm really happy about that. I think it's an excellent project, and I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
I just wanna say thank you to the developer, thank you, Councilwoman Coleman, this area, where it's gonna be built in that area of Ward F, it's like, it's dilapidated back there, the residents of the area love the project, it's a win-win, it's actually very good for Ward F. I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
This is a great project, is, is needed in that area, and tax abatements, that's what it's really for, an incentive to, for developers to come in areas that, that need help. So I'm glad to vote aye, and not only that, part of our responsibility is to make sure the compliance department does what it's supposed to do when it's time for us to collect on the tax abatements. Now, somewhere along the administration before us, it was a gap, but now we have a great compliance department, and not only that, we develop in a committee, which also makes sure that the checks and balances are all together. So twenty-year tax abatement for an area like this is worth voting yes for. It will give the people an incentive, and not only that, it brings hope to a community. That's what it's all about, bringing hope to a community that seemed like it was failing. So I vote aye.
Council president.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add and echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Uh, for folks who are just doing this by straight by the numbers, you're absolutely right, the numbers don't work in, in the favor of the city of Jersey City. But some projects can't be measured by the straight dollars and cents and numbers, and this is one of them. This is a catalyst project for an area that's in, in need of redevelopment, and this is, as my colleague said, a, uh, the way a tax abatement should be structured to be able to, um, provide the incentive and, and impetus for development and growth. And so the, you know, the long-term benefit is that it'll encourage continued development and investment into areas that have been long neglected. So congratulations to Councilperson Coleman, this is really great, and the developers, thank you for taking the investment in, into Jersey City, and I vote aye.
We have an eight-one vote, Councilman Yun voting no for item four P, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred eighty-one. That's it for the second reading ordinances, council members. We are to the public request for speaking, Jamie Vasquez.
We voted aye.
Good evening. Uh, at a couple of council meetings that I've attended, I mentioned to you that I want to come every once in a while and talk about history. And a few months back, Yvonne Bolser mentioned the fact that people have died for us to be able to stand here. And I want to throw my two cents in here. I'm gonna read to you an excerpt of a book that I've been working on forever, um, about the Vietnam War. "The explosion engulfed my entire body. I was peppered with dozens of pieces of red hot shrapnel from a hand grenade thrown by a North Vietnamese army soldier. I had just thrown three grenades and taken out three soldiers who were attempting to cut their way through the barbed wire perimeter. The explosion knocked me about ten feet down the trench line. I screamed so loud that I scared myself. I got up and started running down the trench line, yelling, 'Corming up, corming up,' a Marines call for a medic. I was wounded above and below both of my knees, and after twenty yards or so, my legs gave out. At that moment, Joe Kimball, a tall lanky southerner from Kentucky, came out of nowhere and picked me up into a fireman's carry. I was still in shock, everything around me was going in slow motion. I didn't have a helmet, and I was worried about getting wounded in the head. All hell broke loose as Joe Kimball carried me to the medical bunker. Machine guns and small arms fire erupted all around us. Rockets and mortars were exploding, and Marines were dying. Joe Kimball took me to the medical bunker, but he couldn't get me through the door. I was bleeding from scores of holes on my body, from below my knees to my upper torso. I was given an injection of morphine and the corpsmen continued to find more holes. It is said that life and death sometimes are a matter of inches. I was saved by my flak jacket. Had I been facing in the opposite direction, the shrapnel would have opened up my chest. Every about half an hour, I was bandaged up. I looked like the money. I was bandaged from my lower legs to my upper torso. I was put on a stretcher and placed outside with other wounded Marines to await medevac. It was about two o'clock in the morning. The chopper, A six, a CH six Chinook, also called Chinooks, was, was coming in to pick up wounded, who by this time were piling up. As the chopper approached the landing site, the pilot was hit in the chest by a fifty-caliber round from a machine gun that was in the valley across from our position. He was killed instantly. The co-pilot took control and pulled away. About an hour later, in the face of this tremendous danger, the CH forty-six returned and saved all of the wounded Marines, and wounded, wounded all the Marines. Bullets were going through the chopper as you pull away from top of Hill Eight-eight-one. I can't say enough about the bravery of the Marine pilots who saved my life and the lives of many other seriously wounded Marines that dark night of April twenty-second, nineteen sixty-eight. Joe Kimball was awarded the Bronze Star for his actions..."
You have one minute, Jamie.
"...for his actions, um, and bravery. I owe my life to those pilots and I owe my life to Joe Kimball. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, note reporter, I spoke to Ms. Porter, my office spoke to Ms. Porter on the phone tomorrow. She has, still has the issue of the bus. I, I understand that, councilman, and she also has an issue of heat that I'll help her address through property conservation. Jason Berg.
Jason Berg, I am the leader coordinator for National Alliance, a common law grand jury group. I hope you enjoy the quavoanto I gave you, gentlemen, a couple of weeks ago, and was put into record for Jury City. The challenge here is America is run on a fiction law. Fiction law, something known to be false and assumed to be true. Ryan versus Motor Credit Company, one thirty-zero, New Jersey ESQ, five-three-one, twenty-three A, two D, six oh-seven, six twenty-one. These statutes which have been deprived a citizen of the rights of a person or property without a real trial, regular real trial, according to the course and the usage of common law, which will not, would not be the law of the land. Hop versus Hodgson's fifteen NC fifteen, comma, twenty-five AM, December six seventy-seven. Our elected servants are not, are out of, are out of control. America operates on fiction of law and it is duty of the sheriff, working with the people if necessary, to protect the unable rights of the people by simply enforcing the, of said, of fed laws. This is coming, this is a six-page document to the county sheriff and constitutional officer. Right now, because the prosecutor is controlling our, our sheriffs, laws are being broken. When the sheriff cannot take direct action, which he is the duly executive role for the administration, cannot do his job and perverted, prevented from doing his job, there is wrongdoing, criminal code violations, felonies. The duty of the sheriff as a constitutional elector fairest by the people is bound by oath as a guardian of the people's unable rights secured by the Constitution. The U.S., the United States Constitution and its capstone Bill of Prohibitions rights is the law of the land, and all statutes in state constitution repugnant to U.S. Constitution are null and void. If the sheriff is ignorant to the Constitution, it would stand to reason that he is in violation of his oath, not knowing when judges and politicians violate the law and thereby technically guilty of treason. United States Constitution, Article Six. The Constitution and laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuant therefore and all treaties made of which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land. And the judges in every state shall be bound therefore, thereby anything in the constitutional laws of the state to the contrary notwithstanding, or laws, rules and procedures which are repugnant to the Constitution are null and void. Marbey versus Madison, fifth U.S., second branch, one thirty-seven, one thirty, one eighty, there. The law of the land, due course of the law and due process of law are synonyms. The pieces, people versus Skinner. Common law is distinguished from law created by the enactment of legislative, legislatures. The common law composes are the body of these principles, the rules of action related to the government and security of persons and property, which deprive their authority solely by the usage and customs of the immoral antiquity.
You have sixty seconds, sixty seconds.
And this stands. The sheriff's executive officer administration of the county, chosen by the property, upon the property election, his, his principal duties is the aid of the criminal and civil courts of the record, common law courts, which we do not have in this county, this state. We are all bound to follow our oaths. As a Vietnam Vet era vet, I have not, my oath has not been rescinded and is everyone's obligation to obey the, the Constitution of the United States. Anyone not obeying the Constitution in a, a position of law are therefore can be charged with treason. And when people say no to the authority and power, like a, like a rapist, it is a crime. No one can go and trespass if you don't give them consent. Thank you very much, God bless.
Your turn is up.
Thank you.
Laverne Washington. Not here. Yvonne, it's your turn.
Yes, it is. Yvonne Bolser, I am not in favor of Phil's proposal to change municipal election from May to November. First, the November election are partisan, because there was a primary in June. The municipal election are nonpartisan. In the past, there were special elections, such as the one in November of nineteen ninety-two, to replace Mayor McCann's mayor. The ballot was overwhelming and was difficult to read. The top vote getter, Brett Shunler, had around six thousand votes, which belies the notion that more people will come out to vote in November. Today's ballot is different.
There were nineteen candidates, Mrs. Bolser.
I understand, but still...
There were nineteen candidates.
But it's now in my time.
I want to put that in perspective.
I didn't finish my stuff yet. I was gonna mention it.
And two Manzos.
I understand that, but I'm, you know, you're giving my five minutes, Mr. ...
I, I'm gonna give you ten seconds, actually.
You took more than that. Today's ballot has questions, the school election, the general elections, and quite frankly, it is difficult to read. The voting machines today are smaller than the McCannville machines in the past, meaning there is a smaller surface to place names. Along with the general election, the school board and the questions, if there was five slates on the ballot, there will be five mayors and their at-large, a total of twenty names. Then you would add the ward candidates, which is longer, and you may have independents. For argument's sake, there could be as many as ten ward candidates, a total of thirty names on the November election. But suppose there are ten mayoral tickets, now you're looking at sixty names. In nineteen eighty-nine, there were twenty people who ran for office as mayor. Not all of them had a full slate.
Oh, nineteen eighty-nine, it was ten.
No, I, it was...
Thirty-two at-large. I was...
I was the person on the coalition revaluation, and I had them come down, all twenty of them, except Mia Kuchi, to speak to the group.
Ask Rich Bajano.
Let's allow, let's allow Yvonne to...
Right, Rich?
Let's allow Yvonne to make her comments.
I, I, I remember having them coming down. I had, in fact, we had an, an, um, cor, cor, um, his, his, um, restaurant.
Kuchi?
Yes. Yes, we did. I am also against this because there will be no runoffs, meaning the next mayor could be elected with twenty or thirty percent of the vote. Even the president of the U.S. has to have a threshold of two hundred and seventy electoral votes. We need fifty plus, plus one to make it a fair election. This is un-American to have an election without a plurality. It also favors a candidate with money. Councilman Philip Platform was banning pay-to-play, removing money from politics. This means a little guy would have a chance, but the little guy today would not have a chance because his access to money is limited. This change favors the wealthy candidate. And I thought about these children coming up to you, and you're saying maybe tomorrow you'd be elected. Well, they won't be elected because they, they will not have the runoff. They will, it's, it's like you're lying to them if you place it on the ballot. It'll be the person who has access to money and access to a developer, and there'll be no runoff. So all the things you were telling, these children over here was a lie, if you place it on the ballot, because it's gonna be very limited. I mean, I, I, I cannot, we should not be doing this to place it as a safety net for anyone. This is really not about the mayor. It's about protecting the, the, the voting, the voting. And to say that it'll give more people a chance to vote, that's baloney. Today, the ballots are mailed to people, and they don't have to have a reason to vote by mail. The issue is, you have too many things going on, people cannot understand the ballot, and as Mr. Byrne talked about, I was in the voting, um, facilities, voting around last, a couple ladies came up to me and said, which Manzo was I voting for? Was it the first one or, I forgot where the other one was at? And, because they couldn't read the names. The, the, the names were just so small. This is, you know, it, it is, we're doing this so someone can have a safety net, but you're talking about changing the voting practice forever, and it's totally wrong. And I'm thinking, there's enough to follow in, in the general election, whether it's governor or it's freeholders, there's enough to follow. The mayor is really an, an important option, and the council, and they should have the, um, it happens only once every four years. You're not saving a lot of money. It's the cost of four cops at step ten with a new contract. You're not saving, and that money, who's working? The senior citizens working in elections. We're taking money out of their pockets.
Thank you, Mrs. Bolser. Amanda Khan.
I just, I just want to, um, this, um, the question that's been presented to vote probably is just specifically, so it's not, um, the, the, that's important. Secondly, if, if eventually council sites can move a legitimate, it will still be a nonpartisan election. The laws of the past, um, doesn't not impact, how is it a nonpartisan?
Nothing.
That's important. So, and, and, and lastly, the order that's been discussed, you have, um, does not permit runoff, so it will still be a nonpartisan election unless the council decides to take a different decision to approve or not.
Okay, all right, all right. Turn this on.
Jerry, could I ask you?
Jeremy, there's a question from the council mayor.
Can I ask you, how could you have really a runoff election? Uh, you have November, the election, Christmas is coming, you have Thanksgiving is coming. Uh, isn't there a time period that has to be between the election and the, uh, and the runoff?
Well, there's, it's four weeks after the election, and it would be the same, we had, it's the same as if we had our election in May. Oftentimes, it conflicts with the June primary and we have elections back-to-back. Jersey City has had to rent voting machines because voting machines get impounded for a certain period of time after the June primary, and they have to flip the machines around to, in order to have the runoff election.
Well, then why don't we get the county to have the primary election the same time as the mayor election? Listen, I'm, I'm not against it. I'm against the fact that thinking about a runoff is, uh, something that...
This question and the words that we were given does not conflict with changing the runoff election. There were runoff, and as the council were given for separate, I'm just an action, activity...
Yeah, but Jeremy, what I'm saying is, Bob said there has to be four weeks in between, all right? So that takes us to Thanksgiving, all right? That's a holiday to December. All right, December. You have Christmas coming. Uh, it's a hard time of the year.
It'll be done before Christmas. It, it's the same, it's the same principle that if we have a runoff election, the transition period is three weeks. It'll be the same, same, same kind of a timetable. Uh, how about we discuss that after, when we're doing that later? We have Ms. Amanda Khan at the podium here requesting to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, Amanda Khan. Um, I'm here speaking as a trustee of the Jersey, Jersey City Parks Coalition. I'm here to oppose the transfer, the resolution opposing the transfer of Bill A thirty-nine sixty-nine slash S twenty-six forty-seven, the Hackensack Meadowlands Agency Consolidation Act, with transfer authority of Liberty State Park to the newly created autonomous agency, the Meadowlands Regional Commission, and away from the State Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP. I'm here to ask the council for your support on this. Jersey State, Liberty State Park is an important asset to Jersey City. Jersey City is vastly growing with brand spanking new high-rising developments that are attracting new residents to its landscape. Consequently, there's an imminent need to have an equitable balance of open space for all of its residents. This is not rocket science, that we want to become a city of high-rise and concrete. Jersey City is only one urban city in the state of New Jersey with state park in its jurisdiction. Why would any official try to curtail access to the gem of an open space? Would they try this maneuver with any other rural or urban towns that has a state park in its jurisdiction? Why the Meadowlands Commission is giving oversight of its jurisdiction of Liberty State Park? Is this a long arm overreaching its bounds? Liberty State Park epitomized what a trophy park is with its multitude of amenities, just to name a few. Boat watching, ferry services, public programs at interpreter's center and the central railroad and of New Jersey. Dining and fishing are just to name a few of its public, of its active and passive recreational all year round. This is where we celebrate the country's freedom on Fourth of July. This is something for everyone to get involved in. I encourage you, I implore you, please stand with us on opposing this ordinance, this bill. There is something for everyone to do at Liberty State Park regardless of your zip code and socioeconomic status. Let freedom of equal access ring to this trophy park, one to the future for many generations to come. This is important to all of Jersey City residents irrespective of what corners you live in Jersey City. Each one of you here represent a specific ward. In addition to that large, you cover all of Jersey City. Liberty State Park, everyone here in this room can say, we have utilized Liberty State Park. This is not for us a political issue, it's not a right or left issue. It's about open space and equal access to open space for all of its residents. So once again, I ask for your support to please oppose this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Pessin.
Uh, Robert, do you allow a switch because Laura Scholor is due to speak?
No, there's no, no menu.
No switching. Okay. Thank you.
You get five minutes, Sam, you, you wanna...
Okay, I'll rush through it.
You're gonna follow.
Okay, thank you. As president of the friends of Liberty State Park and the son of Morris Pessin, the father of the park, and the progressive councilman from nineteen sixty-nine to seventy-seven, I thank you very much for taking up this important and timely resolution. I particularly want to thank council president Rolando Rivera, downtown councilwoman Candace The park... The park needs you to stand up for justice, for the democratic process, and for the true purposes of a family park for people of all cultural backgrounds to enjoy behind Lady Liberty. The park is in grave danger. The Friends is urging the people to, and this body, to ask the governor to conditionally veto this Meadowlands bill, which is a confiscation of the park from the DEP and from full public participation, and giving away the park on a silver platter to an autonomous development agency, whose main goal would be to carry out the governor's plan of privatizing and commercializing the park for over forty, for almost forty years, the park will be forty next year. The overwhelming majority, the broad public consensus, has been for free and green urban park behind Lady Liberty. The Liberty Park ten lines in this eighty-page bill sneaked in at the last minute with no public knowledge and no public discussion behind closed doors is a travesty, it's a crime, the stealing of the park behind Lady Liberty. And the language that the commission shall evaluate, approve, and implement any plan for the park is an immediate and long-term danger for the park. And despite what the bill's defenders have stated, this broad language gives a blank check to this commission. Most users of Liberty Park come from Jersey City, and public access will suffer with less open space, with admission fee areas of the park, and too many summer weekend events blocking the park's access to the hard-working families who need and deserve and want this beautiful park, which is our backyard. As Senator Lesniak stated last week, the governor felt it would be easier to privatize the park through this commission than going through the DEP. This commission will provide minimal public input and then will ignore the voice of the people. The park, as we know, is sacred New Jersey and sacred American public land. It's sacred because it's scarce urban open space and sacred as its Lady Liberty's neighbor. Former Senator Bernie Kinney once said that next to the battlefield at Gettysburg, that Liberty Park was the most sacred public space in America. The Friends are grateful for your considering, taking a principled stand with your resolution tonight on behalf of the residents of our city, our state, and our nation. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Steve Hyman, Vicki Hyman left. Laura Scholar. Good evening.
Laura Scholar, President of the Jersey City Parks Coalition. What I'd like to do is read into the record a letter that was sent to Governor Christie last week regarding the Hackensack Meadowlands Agency Consolidation Act. Dear Governor Christie, with the undersigned community and environmental advocacy organizations of New Jersey, a writing to urge you to reverse course and remove any language from A 3969/ S 2647, the Hackensack Meadowlands Agency Consolidation Act, which transfers authority for Liberty State Park to the newly-created autonomous agency, the Meadowlands Regional Commission, and away from the State Department of Environmental Protection. Such a change is sure to decrease oversight and accountability for Liberty State Park's natural resources while leaving the park's future more susceptible to political whims and private development. Any proposal to shift oversight and management of a public park as important as Liberty State Park should have been fully disclosed in an open and transparent public process. Since that process did not take place here, it is incumbent upon you to use the power of conditional veto to strike any language impacting the park from the act and secure its future as a public natural resource. As originally drafted, the act simply addressed a tax issue and established the commission as a regional redevelopment agency for the Meadowlands. The final version stretched the act well beyond the original legislative intent. It was not the legislature's goal to open Liberty State Park to privatization or redevelopment, but as passed by the Assembly and Senate, it does just that. The problematic language was added at your administration's request at the eleventh hour before the holidays and without meaningful legislative debate or public input. It allows the newly-created commission to evaluate, approve, and implement any plan or plans for the future preservation, development, enhancement, or improvement of Liberty State Park. By removing oversight and direct control of the park from the DEP, the act makes it easier for this autonomous agency to take actions impacting the park without public scrutiny, an ability which opens the door to allowing private developers access to parklands. Given that the DEP's management of the park has been effective and that DEP has built strong relationships with local stakeholders like Citizens Advocacy Group, the Friends of Liberty State Park, we have serious questions about the motives behind changes in the act. Often called a jewel of the state of New Jersey, Liberty State Park is one of our most important public assets and belongs to the citizens of the state who have consistently expressed opposition to private development in the park throughout its history. As stewards of New Jersey's public lands and open space and advocates for environmental protection and conservation, we object to the policy change inherent in the language inserted into the act and will continue to stand with the citizens of the state against any efforts to privatize or redevelop Liberty State Park without full public input. We are confident that you will consider our views regarding this unprecedented change in the oversight of Liberty State Park. We urge you to implement the power of conditional veto to remove language that transfers Liberty State Park from the state DEP's purview and to the Meadowlands Regional Commission. This is signed by myself as President of the Jersey City Parks Coalition, Esther Winter of Civic JC, Cara Herbowski, the President of the Duncan Avenue Neighborhood Association, Doug O'Malley, Executive Director of Environment New Jersey, Mark Burnby Jr., President of Farms in the Heights, Jeremy Jacobson, President of the Horsemus Cove Association, Gerald F. Nichols, Chair of the Jersey City Environmental Commission, Ed Potisnak, Executive Director of the League of Conservation Voters, Greg Ramode, Deputy Director of the New York New Jersey Baykeeper, myself as President of the Persian Field Garden Friends, Kern Weissman as President of the River View Neighborhood Association, Stephen Latham as President of the Jersey City Reservoir Preservation Alliance, Captain Bill Sheehan, Riverkeeper and Executive Director of the Hackensack Riverkeeper, Sam Pessin, President of Friends of Liberty State Park, Douglas J. Fleischer, the Laura Officers of Douglas J. Fleischer, Ron Hein, Executive Director of the Fund for a Better Waterfront, Pola Fialle, President of the New Jersey Federation of Sportsman Clubs, Steven Gucciardo, President of the Embankment Preservation Coalition, Phyllis Salo Kay, Executive Director of New Jersey Citizens Action, Tanya Jordan, Project Manager and Fundraiser of the River View Community Garden, and Tim Dillingham, Executive Director of the American Literal Society. Please stand with us.
Thank you. I'm going to let, you went way over. May I have that so the court reporter can have the correct spelling?
Laura, Sam, Amanda, nobody's going to touch Liberty State Park.
Thank you, Rich.
Kern Weissman, Kern Weissman here? Okay, any on, the on-deck circle is the first row. If you're going to speak tonight, migrate up towards the front if you would, please.
Sorry for hanging in the back there.
Weissman, please begin.
Okay. I'm here to, on behalf of the River View Neighborhood Association, to go on record. I know there was a first reading of the ordinance 15.002 regarding the naming of the Hundred Steps for Bill Gahin. I would like to go on the record that we, the River Neighborhood Association actually opposes this in the sense that we would rather see these steps named after someone in the community. This person was Maria Tuzzo. Now, Maria Tuzzo was a, the longest-serving board member for the River View Neighborhood Association. During the building of the steps, you know, it was a long process, over seven years. She was a tireless fighter for this, for the community. She was, she unfortunately passed away prior to the steps being built, and we had discussed this, it was never formalized, obviously. And what we were asked, what we're asking is that instead of this being named after Bill, what we'd like to have is these steps named after someone who served, you know, the River Neighborhood Association and community for, you know, over thirty years as a more appropriate measure. So what I'm specifically asking is, I will send an email with the details of this, you know, to all the councils, so you have this. But I'm asking if you would, you know, potentially reach out to Bill Gahin. And I know this is out there, there's been quotes in paper. The first time I read it, it was in the newjersey.com, so, you know, I had no pre-warning for this. We were not consulted for this in any way, shape, or form. I've spoken directly to the mayor about that. But what we can do now is ask directly to Bill if he would, you know, graciously decline and allow these steps to be dedicated to Maria, which I think would be a more appropriate thing to do. So I'm asking if you guys would consider doing that? I don't know if you guys have a relationship with Bill or would, but, you know, if he would, you know, encourage him to do that so that we can have these steps named after, you know, someone who is a pillar and tireless fighter for the community. It should be noted that these steps, I think, I don't think anyone would disagree, I don't think Bill would disagree, that these steps would not be there if it weren't for the efforts of the River Neighborhood Association. I know that some of you guys follow this more closely than others. I will send a detailed email so you can have a little bit more background on this. Do you have a question?
Ryan, I was going to say, why don't we name it after both of them? I know Maria for years and years and years.
Yeah, yeah, you know Maria.
I want to let you know, nobody ever contacted me as Ward C. Councilman. It's it. The steps are in Ward C.
Right.
About any of this.
Right.
So I'd say, instead of embarrassing Bill, why don't we name it after both of them, which would be, you know...
So I tell you what, let me take that back to the board, and I'll discuss that with the board, and what I'll do is, we'll communicate with email?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Weissman.
And I had one other thing. I still have a little time.
All right. Please sum up.
Yep. No, the last thing is, I just want to reiterate the support for the resolution regarding Liberty State Park as, as we feel as an organization, as part of the Jersey City Parks Coalition, that this is potentially an attempt to pass control to privatize, you know, to this commission to privatize Liberty State Park. So we fully endorse that resolution as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Brown-Rouge.
Good evening. As a President of Jersey City and one of the authors of the letter which Laura Scholar just read into the record, I want to thank you for and support you in proposing the resolution regarding the transfer of authority over Liberty State Park to the newly-created Meadowlands Regional Commission. I oppose privatization of the park and am grateful that the council has called attention to this issue since I was denied as a citizen the opportunity to comment on it. I'm also here to thank you on behalf of three organizations in the city, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, who were signers on the letter but wanted to be here tonight specifically to thank the council for your efforts to protect the right of the community, to express their views regarding the enactment of legislation and policies which affect them so deeply. We commend you for respecting the role of the public and the stewardship of public land and for demanding that any attempt to privatize Liberty State Park must be an open and democratic process. Finally, I am here as the community organizer for, community organizer for, community reinvestment for New Jersey Citizen Action, a statewide 501(c)(4) social and economic justice organization. We advocate for civic engagement and citizen participation in the political and legislative process. On behalf of our sixty thousand individual members and our one hundred affiliate organization members, we commend the council for your strong leadership in denouncing the lack of transparency with respect to the passage of the Hackensack Agency Consolidation Act, and we praise the council for elevating the voices of your constituents, which were never considered in the legislative process. We also praise the council for recognizing and honoring the historic public opposition to privatization of one of the state's most cherished and valued public assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Sheila Scully. Is Sheila Scully present? Then Beverly Brown-Rouge was our last speaker, our keynote speaker. Thank you. Council members, we can make some tracks real quick. Petitions and communications, item 6A through 6Z 18. We have a lone officer's communication, 7A, reports of directors, 8A through G. Council members, we have the refunding claims, claims and addendum number one. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the approval of all of the...
Jason, is there something you need?
Yes, I want to give...
Please, this meeting, please.
I just had to hand this...
No, you're interrupting the meeting. You're interrupting the meeting. 10A through 10J, H has been withdrawn. H is withdrawn. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
10A through J, nine-zero. K through S, Gudjuski, Councilperson Gudjuski, Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.[1626.65] Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
LeVaro.
Just on 10N, I'll abstain. New Jersey City University is a, where I'm employed, is a grant recipient. And 10O is another grant where New Jersey City University is a partner in the application. I vote aye on all the rest.
You're abstaining on 10N and 10O?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. K through S unanimously, 9-0. N and O, 8-0-1 abstaining, Council President LeVaro. T through the balance of business, which is Z3, the Liberty State Park Resolution, and Z4, the resolution supporting the path system. So it's 10T through the balance of business. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
10Z, 10T through Z4. Councilperson Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
10Y, I'm gonna abstain on that for now.
10Y, you're abstaining. Okay.
Can we get further?
Councilperson, okay, and your vote on the balance? You're voting aye on the rest?
Yeah.
Councilperson Yun.
Well, I say yes, except 10Y, but before I do that, council, co-person council, and the Robert, can I ask you a quick question? They mentioned today cost of saving at least $400,000, but as I understand, each municipal election costs $200,000.
No, that's incorrect.
It's incorrect to make...
Wildly, wildly incorrect.
Okay. Tell me.
We, it cost us for a municipal election just to put workers in the polls, about $170,000. Some of it, which is reimbursed by the state.
Okay. I'm sorry?
It, some of it is reimbursed by the state. We have to print sample ballots, we have to post, put postage on the sample ballots. For every sample ballot that is returned to the superintendent of elections, we have to pay first-class postage for the return of that sample ballot. When someone moves at it, when they move at, when, for instance, your son moves away from home, instead of marking the ballot and saying, "He's moved," some parents collect their children's mail, and that's why we have an inflated voter registration registry. And it looks like there's more voter apathy. There's a difference between registered voters and eligible voters. So we spend a good, we spend a good, solid dollar. We spent over $650,000 conducting the election and the runoff. And we didn't have a complete, full runoff, given that there was an outright win in Ward E and the mayor won on the first ballot, so...
Okay, then let me ask you the next question. Let me, so Robert actually knows better than anybody else, I think, of the, so now, we spent $650,000, and you mentioned today some dollars the state reimbursed. After state reimbursed, what is the actual cost for Jersey City?
We got a $90,000 reimbursement from the state for the board workers. We get reimbursed $125, up to $125 per board worker, not for a runoff, only for the municipal.
Okay.
Right. They, they, I was, I was consulted about the number. If, obviously, if it was in November, we are cutting out one election, the $400,000 savings was considering the runoff.
Okay, no.
Because, you know, if we have two elections, a municipal and a runoff, we could push $750,000, $800,000 next election, possibly.
Okay. So now, next question is, Robert, the other person actually conduct the whole election, municipal election in Jersey City, so probably knows that. If we do that in November general election, probably we're gonna have some years, maybe not 2017, some year will be federal, state, when they say it's a state municipal...
We're on the, we're on the schedule for the gubernatorial. There is no federal elections going to be held this, in the November that we hold our municipal elections.
You say 2017?
We run on the gubernatorial cycle, so there'll be state offices, but no federal offices.
No federal, but can be have a federal state, a federal senator or senator, US Congress or US Senator. We're not, I think US Congress might. That's what I'm saying. So now...
Congress... I don't think it's comfortable, even though I'm...
Okay. We could look into that, but it's, we run on the gubernatorial cycle.
Mayor in November, we're gonna have a runoff, no matter when the election is held. Doesn't matter.
Well, that, 1997 was a...
So when I look at it, at least when you see their ballot form, 50 to 60, 70 candidate men will lined up. And the some election, I mean, the general election, where it be party, board where, municipal government, state, can be county, plus referendum, it's gonna be very crowded. And the ballot we're gonna see, and when they put all those names, any board go to boarding booth, they have to bring out the magnifying glass, and they have to have a GPS system in their fingers to make sure where their fingers in they're located. It's gonna be really confused general public and the boarders. That's number one. Number two, number two, our municipal government issue can be easily buried with a state issue or county issue or federal issue. So we are, we'll be not large, the city and the state of New Jersey, and our own city issue will be buried somewhere. And the number three, it's a beautiful beauty of the municipal, I mean, that the non-partisans may give to more opportunity to people interest to serve the, in the public. But now, if you're getting the general election most independent or reform candidate, it's gonna be hard to elect. So if we all those, if we look at it, in fact, I think a saving $400,000 every four years is not an actual issue. So when I look at it, this is a bad idea. If we look at this fact, only one person get the benefit out of it. I'm not, I'm not gonna say that, but it can be mayor, I hate to say that, if the mayor run for primary, if we not pass the primary, he can be run for mayor again, because enough time to do that. Is that right? Yes, Jeff? Tell me, tell me.
I have a question before we go ahead. It should be asked our residents of New Jersey. I think you raised the point. I think, you know, so the question what you're saying, and the discussion is valuable, and I think it's actually refreshing that we go to Jersey City, we like it, and it's right just as...
Right.
Well, yes, I understand. I understand, you know. And also, most cases, Jersey City municipal election gonna face runoff. And when the people have to campaign Thanksgiving and the holiday, it's gonna be a very difficult and the winter time, you never know. We have snow in, end of October, so it's gonna be very difficult. When you talk about turnout, in general election, it seems like that's a major issue, but lot of election, very, very low turnout, can be, we're gonna face that issue. So my personal opinion?
On the other side...
I say no.
Okay.
It's, I cannot see any benefit to taxpayers of Jersey City, and especially boarders.
You're voting no on Y, rest, and aye on the rest?
Yes.
Councilperson Osborne?
Um, so just before I take my vote, I would like to, to offer a slightly different opinion. I think it is so refreshing that we are giving the residents of Jersey City the ability to decide when they want to have elections. I personally, for a long time, have felt that they made no sense in May because of turnout, well before getting involved in politics myself. But, but more importantly, I trust the public to make the decision. They have all the information, and I don't think we should sit up here as a council and say, "We know what's best," and pat 'em on the head, "Let's let the public decide." I think it's a good thing. As it relates to Z3 and Z4, you know, both of these were things that came out over the holidays, in between Christmas and New Year's. And one was to cut path service in the evenings, and the other was to potentially attempt to privatize Liberty State Park. And I just feel like, you know, first of all, they're both horrible ideas. If they were good ideas, they would have been released, you know, in a time when there was a lot of public input and a lot of opportunity for the public to hear about it. And if the governor has an idea, then he should man up and stand behind it, not try to sneak it in. I think he needs to veto the Liberty State Park line item, and I commend the Port Authority for taking out the ridiculous idea to cut path service at night. I vote aye on all.
I vote aye on all.
Councilperson Rivera?
Vote aye on all.
Councilperson Waterman?
I vote aye.
Council President?
So just on Y, it's already been said, this is a campaign promise that was made, at least by certain members who sit up here, and I think this is moving in the right direction. I know there are concerns about a crowded ballot and things of that nature. I think that's things that we can resolve and address. And, you know, the idea that we're saving money as well as allowing more people, we see greater turnout for the Board of Ed election, more participation in that after we moved it to November, and I expect we'll see the same for Jersey City's municipal elections as well. So on 10Y, that's my comment. And then on 10Z3, with regard to Liberty State Park, you know, the governor's insistence on adding this amendment to the, to the legislation is just terrible to the people of Jersey City and to people who, to all people throughout the state of New Jersey who, who appreciate and value open space and public open space. I want you to know that we're gonna stand with you in any efforts to privatize and privatize Liberty State Park in any way, shape, or form, and we'll fight that tooth and nail, and send a resounding message to the governor that not in Jersey City, will that, will this go by. On 10Z4, the Port Authority, Councilperson Osborne already spoke to that, and I'll also just add that not just the weekend path service, but also the idea that there was legislation that got vetoed here that was approved by two state legislatures in New Jersey and New York, vetoed by two governors in a very underhanded move over the holidays, literally between, in the holidays, between Christmas and New Year's and so forth. And the idea of restoring the weekend path service is good, but it's taken our eyes off the fact that they completely, rather than provide greater transparency at the Port Authority and the funding, and the excessive funding and bloated bureaucracy that's the Port Authority, you know, that needs all get under control and whatever the legislature can do to overturn that. And I know people say it's impossible for, to try to get the two legislatures back together again on that, but I think it's worth trying because the, the Port Authority has been a wasteful agency to the taxpayers of Jersey City and the state of New Jersey. I vote aye on all.
Okay. Allow me to recap. Council members, Y has been approved. 7-1-1, voting no. Councilperson Yun abstaining. Councilperson Bajano. I would entertain the motion to adjourn at 8:54 PM. We have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilman Ram Chau. Let's all say goodnight at 8:54. Goodnight. Goodnight. Goodnight.